I'm calling to order this Northridge Board of Education regular board meeting. This is Tuesday, November the 18th, 2025. The time is 6:30.
A pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Lewis, can we have the roll call?
Yes, Mrs. Bamerlin.
Present.
Mrs. Krieger.
Present.
Mr. Hart.
Present.
Mr. Schrock.
Present.
Mrs. Vance.
Present. Our mission in Viking values and the See Something, Say Something campaign, empowering all students to reach their fullest potential. The Viking values are trust, leadership, communication, collaboration, accountability, integrity, and respect. And we do adhere to the See Something, Say Something safety campaign. And we're on number five now, approval of the agenda. Do you have a motion to approve the agenda?
I will make a motion.
Okay, Mrs. Krieger has motioned. And Mr. Shrock has seconded. Is there any discussion? No. You won. Sure. Can I have the roll, Mr. Lewis?
Mrs. Bamerlin.
Yes.
Mrs. Krieger.
Yes.
Mr. Hart.
Yes.
Mr. Schrock.
Yes.
Mrs. Vance.
Yes, motion passes five to zero. Recognition of visitors. Do we have any?
We have no one signed in to speak.
Okay, no one tonight. Okay, superintendent's report.
All right, just an update that the cell phone policy that will be on in December, it is going to become a requirement of school districts. I'll start letting parents know right after Thanksgiving that when we come back on January the 6th, cell phones are not allowed in schools, meaning to be used, they have to be stored away unless it's, the exceptions will be for a 504 plan, an IEP, medical reasons, or if a teacher deems it necessary for instruction within the classroom. So that is a requirement now that has to happen. So the policy will come in December, and then the parents will be notified and kids will have to start doing that January the 6th. Just wanted to officially let everybody know that it didn't change. It is coming, so we are going to do it. I'm happy to answer any questions if you have that, but that's what we're going to be required to do.
I think we saw this coming, didn't we? Okay, thank you for that. Now we're on to number eight, administrative board report. Did you want to highlight anything there, Mr. Bloom?
Nothing, just not sure exactly every little detail, but there was a very successful, I want to highlight the middle school for Frozen. That was pretty awesome, excellent job. I was actually very proud of how good they sounded and looked and were organized, and it was fantastic. So that was really nice. The trick or treat since the last time, that was well attended, a lot of good things. The fall sports season has ended and winter is starting. So a lot of good stuff, and I think Friday night is the first girls varsity game at home. So we're jumping in right away, and the bowling started last Saturday. So a lot of good things going on.
Thank you. Now we're on number nine, treasure recommendations.
Yes, we're asking you to approve the minutes from the regular board meeting on October 21, article number two.
Okay, I'll make a motion to approve those. And seconded by Mr. Hart. Any discussion or anything?
I have several items. On the one that has been left for us this evening, the, there was a change again. The board discussion item has been completely removed, which we had, I brought up board discussion as requesting us talking through setting goals for this school year. I saw the changes, the red line changes that someone recommended today that was sent out as well, which is different than this. I did not agree with those, but I did agree with the original, that were originally presented to us on Friday. So those are my comments about discussion.
That original was, I think it was misleading to the public.
I thought the one that it was, I thought the way it was presented today was not clear and was not, it acted as though we made a decision, and there was no decision. I had asked to have goals added to this agenda, and they're not on here. So I think the one today we're misleading.
You can bring that up and.
I'm bringing it up.
You can bring it up in board, board business if you'd like. But the board was split when we talked about that. We made no decision. We made no recommendations or anything.
Agreed.
Okay, and that's why.
But the way that it was changed today, it makes it sound like there was a decision made.
I got a front page of minutes and a few pages.
I'm sorry.
Of a three-page agenda. Mr. Schrock, may I borrow your copy if you have that from us? I don't know. My, my copy of this, the other side of the agenda, the other minutes there.
Well, considering that, I will move to table the minutes and move them to next month.
Well, I don't, I don't have that updated. I don't think it's the. So we will, we will, you want to move to table that since we don't.
I'm assuming that's why she's thinking something else was changed is because maybe this printed incorrectly. So yeah, we should probably table it since we don't have the. I just assumed it was still.
I think it's the minute, it's the agenda. Yeah, there are. I think that something happened.
I think it's just a mis.
This is last month's agenda, which is our minutes, but it shows where it passed. I think it's all right here except for 18.
No, it doesn't say that motions were made and seconded and the vote and everything. It's just in a different format, but this is where nothing's there.
18 has been removed completely.
I saw the first ones, and they were absolutely ridiculous because the ones that came out was.
Yeah, what I saw this afternoon was fine, but it's not in here. So we can, we can table that since we don't have it in front of us too, too.
I'll second lunch. Somebody second it.
No. Okay, did, did you get that, Mr. Lewis?
Not yet. Mrs. Bamerlin's got a first, Mr. Hart has a second to table.
Yep.
And that overrides the original.
Okay, a snafu there. Can I have the roll call, Mr. Lewis?
Yes, Mrs. Bamerlin.
Yes, this is to table.
To table.
Okay.
Mrs. Krieger.
Yes.
Mr. Hart.
Yes.
Hang on one second, one second. I apologize. I'm in the wrong spot, and I'm, give me a second to get back in. I'd appreciate that. Leave their right. Minutes are down here. There we go. I apologize. So table. Is Mrs. Bamerlin.
No, no.
Mr. Hart. Okay, I had a yes from Mrs. Bamerlin.
Yes.
A yes to Mrs. Krieger. A yes for Mr. Hart. Mr. Schrock.
This is on the table.
It's on the table. And Mrs. Vance.
Yes, motion passes five to zero. This has been tabled. Mr. Lewis, it's still you.
All right, it's approval of the October financial reports as presented by me, but it was also approved by the finance committee. Article number three.
I'll make a motion to approve.
And I'll second. So motion by Mrs. Bamerlin and seconded by myself. Any discussion? Mr. Lewis, can we have the roll?
Yes, Mrs. Bamerlin.
Yes.
Mrs. Krieger.
Yes.
Mr. Hart.
Yes.
Mrs., Mr. Schrock.
Yes.
Mrs. Vance.
Yes, motion passes five to zero.
I see we have the motion to approve the following donation, the Batel Foundation Fund through the Columbus Foundation, Columbus, Ohio awarded a $5,000 grant to the Northridge High School for the O S L N STEM classroom.
With approval.
Did you move some of those, Mr. Hart?
I did.
I'll second.
Seconded by Mrs. Bamerlin. Any discussion? Can we have the roll, Mr. Lewis?
Mrs. Bamerlin.
Yes.
Mrs. Krieger.
Yes.
Mr. Hart.
Yes.
Mr. Schrock.
Yes.
Mrs. Vance.
Yes, motion passes five to zero.
We're asking you to then on D, approve the estimated resource appropriations and increase in the estimated resources, appropriation amount of $5,000 for the STEM that we just did, and then a decrease in the estimated resources of $476 to the principal's fund at the elementary. at the elementary.
And these decreases were because of the Hartland?
It was because it was cheaper, it was less money than what they...
I was surprised when I saw that, but good, like refunds. I'll motion.
I'll second.
Seconded by Mrs. Bamerlin. Any discussion? Can we have the roll, Mr. Lewis?
Mrs. Bamerlin?
Yes.
Mrs. Krieger?
Yes.
Mr. Hart?
Yes.
Mr. Schrock?
Yes.
Mrs. Vance?
Yes, motion passes five to zero. Superintendent's Recommendations.
Okay, just standard, under A you have two resignations. Under B you have two, sorry, three athletic supplementals. And item C you have one long-term substitute teacher contract who's been with us since the start of the year.
What's the, what's the substitute, which is the name? What is that for?
Oh, there is a substitute teacher.
Okay, which can be put, placed anywhere. Okay, gotcha. All right. Mr. Hart, do you have something? Okay.
I'll just keep my finger near the button to turn it on and off easier.
I'll make a motion.
And I will second it.
Seconded by Mrs. Krieger. Any discussion?
Mrs. Bamerlin?
Yes.
Mrs. Krieger?
Yes.
Mr. Hart?
Yes.
Mr. Schrock?
Yes.
Mrs. Vance?
Yes, motion passes five to zero. Volunteers.
Number 11, the volunteers, you will see one, two, three, four, five volunteers who would like to volunteer in our schools.
I'll make a motion, I'll second.
Okay, motion by Mrs. Krieger, seconded by Mrs. Bamerlin. Any discussion? Can we have the roll, Mr. Lewis?
Mrs. Bamerlin?
Yes.
Mrs. Krieger?
Yes.
Mr. Hart?
Yes.
Mr. Schrock?
Yes.
Mrs. Vance?
Yes, motion passes five to zero. Want to talk about that?
Sure. Item 12 will be the sales projects and field trips. You will see two, uh, sales projects and a host of field trips that are upcoming.
I'll make a motion. Do I have a second?
I'll second it.
Seconded by Mrs. Krieger. Any discussion? Can we have the roll, Mr. Lewis?
Yes, Mrs. Bamerlin?
Yes.
Mrs. Krieger?
Yes.
Mr. Hart?
Yes.
Mr. Schrock?
Yes.
Mrs. Vance?
Yes, motion passes five to zero.
All right, number 13, Policies, our first reading, just a whole list of policies to go over.
And those ones that I sent you, are we approving them here because they're still in here, that they're going to be...
Since their first readings, yeah, they'll be adjusted before they come back.
All right. There were a few of them, nothing big, it was stuff that they're working on, so, okay. I'll motion. Do I have a second?
I'll second it.
Okay, seconded by Mrs. Krieger. Any discussion? Can we have the roll, Mr. Lewis?
Yes, Mrs. Bamerlin, excuse me.
Yes.
Mrs. Krieger?
Yes.
Mr. Hart?
Yes.
Mr. Schrock?
Yes.
Mrs. Vance?
Yes, motion passes five to zero.
Okay, item number 14, Concrete Repair Replacement. This is going to be funded out of the Permanent Improvement Fund. Also, this part of this passage would be to join a cooperative so we can get competitive pricing. And this has been something that I've been told, that has been on the radar for a while, and this would be for concrete replacement for the 612 building all the way around, up to $300,000.
Do I have a motion?
I'll make a motion.
I, I will second it.
Motion by Mr. Shrock? And seconded by Mrs. Krieger. Any discussion on this? Seeing none, can I have the roll, Mr. Lewis?
Yes, Mrs. Bamerlin?
Yes.
Mrs. Krieger?
Yes.
Mr. Hart?
Yes.
Mr. Schrock?
Yes.
Mrs. Vance?
Yes, motion passes five to zero. And I will say that this is in desperate need, so... Yeah, so, so glad that's going to get done. And we're, are we on number 15 now? Okay, now we have a business initiated by the board. Yes.
Yeah, I'd like to move at this time that we pursue it to Section 4D of the treasurer's contract, um, which provides after the conclusion of each contract year, the treasurer may qualify for a performance incentive payment of up to 5% of the paid period compensation, reference to the components definition. Treasurer may qualify for said performance incentive if he successfully performs the duties set forth in his job description and achieves identified district objectives, which are defined as the goals as determined by the board. And there are certain timing provisions that I'm not going to lay out here. Uh, the term, the determination of whether the goals have been met or exceeded and whether a performance incentive payment is to be provided shall be made by the board in the board's sole and absolute discretion, which is about the broadest standard you can have. As long as we don't act arbitrarily or capriciously, we can do it however or whenever, you know, well, there was timing, we've never met the timing before, so wouldn't want to start that in the last year, would we, Mr. Schrock? So I'd move that we provide a full 5% incentive compensation under the section, just, uh, just read.
Okay. And I will second that. Any discussion?
Yes. Based on this year, we have not, as a board, given an evaluation to Mr. Lewis yet. And based on that and the fact, second fact, is that last month we changed contracts and updated all of that. I move that this does not move forward this evening, and there needs to be further discussion.
We are way past the deadline for this.
Wait, there's a motion, point of order, there's a motion.
Okay, we already have a motion.
So I, I take that as an amendment, or, well, yeah, that, what is your motion?
Um, that would be...
I do not amend. My motion is to table.
Okay.
Okay, okay.
So...
So Jema has a motion to table, do we have a second?
I would second that.
Okay. Jema and Kate, Mrs. Krieger have motion to table, or have moved, yeah, motion to table. Okay. Right? Okay.
I don't think it's debatable, is it, Mr. Lewis?
Not a table.
No.
But it does take a vote.
Yep. Okay, can we have the roll, Mr. Lewis?
Yes.
This is on the motion to table.
Yes, Mrs. Bamerlin?
Yes.
Mrs. Krieger?
Yes.
Mr. Hart?
No.
Mr. Schrock?
Yes.
To table? To table the motion?
Oh, no.
What?
No, no.
Why not? This is on the table.
This is the table, he's not on...
To not take up the incentive motion.
Mrs. Vance?
Uh, no.
So the motion fails? Three to two. Think about that for a minute. Now back to the... What would you like to say?
I want to address the no evaluation argument. As I read from the contract, there's nothing in the contract that requires an evaluation, but we did an evaluation. We spent a lot of time on evaluations, every, for the first time ever, every board member submitted one. Um, and Mrs. Vance prepared an excellent consolidation, um, which some board members weren't happy with. And we, and then Mr. Lewis's, um, contract was, basically the, the, the need for an evaluation for Mr. Lewis this year ended. But nothing in the contract requires an evaluation. It just requires that the board act in its sole and absolute discretion. As I indicated, as long as we don't act arbitrarily or capriciously, and we've all supplied evidence for why we feel the way we do, there's, there's, there's no need for a formal evaluation.
I found the same thing when I was reviewing, um, everything involved. Is there anything else? And it, and I will, I do want to say this, because I think it needs to be said, and, um, something that a future board or boards will take up. I think it is unfair to both of our superintendent and treasurer to drag these evaluations out. It's not, it's not very respectful, and it's not fair to them. Evaluation should be us looking towards the future, how we can help them be better, you know, um, or, you know, praise them for outstanding work. But, but nevertheless, it's, it's, it's too for the future. So, and the process that I've been involved the last two years has not facilitated that.
Mrs. Vance, you're absolutely right. But, I mean, I, I have to say, ever since we put Mr. Lewis's contract, which had these, these incentive pay provisions in them, now his contract originally provided for a determination in July. And at some point we amended his contract, one of the times when we renewed it, he said that July wasn't a good time, uh, because of everything that's going on, it'd be better, it'd be better to push it, and that's where we got to August. But we never, we never even hit August, um, as far as I can remember. There might have been one, but I don't think we did. And we never hit it, we never hit it on the superintendent's contract either. But now, none of that matters because these contracts that require evaluations or require determinations for purposes of incentive pay, we no longer have one. And so the next year's board won't have this issue. What next year's board is left with is policy. And I had caused to look at policy since the last meeting. And one of the things that I found is that both the section that deal with evaluation of the treasurer and evaluation of the superintendent provide explicitly that the evaluation of each administrator is to occur no later than March 1st.
I saw that.
And so, uh, um, that, that doesn't leave a lot of time for the board coming in, but it, I think it leaves enough time to do the, to, to, I mean, you're supposed to work with the superintendent in doing the evaluation, it's clear in the, in that policy. And you should work with the treasurer too, but the treasurer's job isn't what it used to be, uh, because it doesn't have all those things that we moved from Mr. Lewis's plate to Mr. Bloom's plate. So, um, I think, I think if the board, and I, and I, I think in policy is probably going to be important to the incoming board, I know it is to you, and I know it is to Mrs. Krieger, that'll probably happen, so...
And if, as a board, the new board find that the policy doesn't match the way we're going to operate, then we need to fix it so we don't have the discrepancies.
Well, and I just want to add that the reason I was supportive of tabling this is because it was a surprise to me. Until I saw the agenda on Friday, I had no idea that this was even something the board was considering. I was under the impression we weren't, so that is where I stand and I...
Okay.
Will be voting no, yeah.
Okay. Your point is taken, Kate. All right, can we have a vote? And this vote is to approve the incentive.
My motion, yeah, the motion I made to, uh, provide full 5% incentive compensation percent of the contract.
Right. Okay, can we have the roll?
Yes, Mrs. Bamerlin?
No.
Mrs. Krieger?
No.
Mr. Hart?
Yes.
Mr. Schrock?
No.
Uh, Mrs. Vance?
Yes. Or no, yes. Yes, I'm a yes. Okay. Mr. Schrock, you were a no for no incentive?
Against Mr. Lewis's incentive compensation.
Did we confuse you? We did the vote for the table.
Oh, no, I'm for it then.
You're for what? The incentive? Okay, which is the 5%. Okay. I think we, we got some confusion there. Are you able now?
Mrs. Vance?
Yes, sure.
I think we need to be careful.
With what?
With, I'm not sure.
We had a table and a motion, I just want to make sure everybody knows what we're voting for.
Understand.
Okay.
Yes.
All right.
Yep.
What was that, Mr. Schrock? Were you voting for the incentive or against it?
Okay.
All right.
Can you clarify what just happened, Mrs. Vance on his vote?
Okay.
For me, please.
Okay, do you want me to clarify or him to clarify?
Maybe I...
He just said he was voting for the incentive.
Okay, that's what I wanted to understand.
Those are his words. Is that correct, Mr. Schrock? Okay. So we have two no's and three yeses, motion passes three to two. Good. Any other business? Jema, did you want to bring something up? You said you did.
We're not there yet. We're at...
Business initiated by the board?
Oh, I don't have any business initiated.
None tonight?
Nope.
Okay. All right. We're on to committee reports. We have academic. We don't have anything for that. There hasn't been anything. Do you, have you heard anything, Ms. Krieger?
No, no.
Finance, um, any updates you guys want to get? No?
There was no, it was just a normal meeting. Nothing else out of the ordinary.
Facility, don't think we've had.
No meeting.
No? Okay. All right, policy? No. Community development, have you heard anything? I have not.
Uh, the only thing I, I've been giving updates on that Speedway Station over at Mink and, uh, Innovation Campus Way. And there are four walls up, no roof yet. It's a 5,000 square foot approximate building. And there will be, I looked this up on New Albany Planning's website, there will be a diesel bay out west along Innovation Campus Way with an entrance over there for, for the truck traffic that goes across there. And there will be a, a regular vehicle entrance off of Mink, and there will be a bay of, or, you know, with, uh, gas, gas pumps for, for vehicles. And, um, they're working on that area, can't tell exactly what they're doing, but it's, uh, it's moving along.
Good.
And I keep bringing it up because I see that as a significant development just outside of our, just outside of our district that I would think is going to attract more people into the, into the area, and certainly along Beaver Road and Jug Street where we get into our district. They won't be, they aren't going to feel like they're so far out anymore, even though you had the Shell Station over on Worthington Road that was across the freeway and on three traffic lights and all that. three traffic lights and all that. This would not be any traffic lights, traffic lights from, from these areas. Uh, makes it feel more like a neighborhood store, I think, so.
Right. And the wellness insurance.
I was going to add something for community development.
Um. Oh, okay.
Uh, Mrs. Cook, Ms. Cook, um, brought up the fact that there is a widening of State Route 161 and 37 planned. And their ODOT is starting community, talking to the community and everything. So she brought that up.
Did she say thirty-six and thirty-seven?
No, 161 and 37.
One six.
Um, Mr. Lowry sent that out to us.
Yeah, I, I, I saw that come out, three lanes all the way to Granville. And, uh, changes to the intersections at Alexandria and, and Mink. They're going to do something crazy in Mink. But we'll see, we'll, we'll, we'll see when it happens. People are going what seems to be the wrong way on certain ramps. It's going to be nuts. Some of those farmers, I don't know.
All right. And there was nothing with the wellness insurance.
Correct.
I did, nothing. It's done for now. Okay. Um, seventeen, discussion?
Um, I would like to speak. Mm-hmm. Um, I believe this is the fourth board meeting that, um, I'm bringing up the fact that I think it's very important for boards to set goals for a school district. Um, I also think that this board has not done a very good job at listening to each other, um, respectfully adding discussion items when it's been asked. Um, and I hope, and I feel that the next board come January, um, they're, they have a wonderful opportunity to work together to set goals for this district that keep the students focused. I mean, the students as a priority in, uh, the goals for this district. And, uh, I'm looking forward to all of the great things that they do. Um, but I wanted to bring that up because I think that, I think we've done a very, we've, we've done quite a few missteps. Um, and it's quite sad. That's all.
Mrs. Vance?
Yes.
I think there are reasons why we're in the state we are regarding goals. Um, this is, I've commented before, our contracts that dealt with goals very clearly and forces to deal with them on at least annual basis, maybe not timely, but we, but we did it on an annual basis. Um, and they were totally out of line with policy, it turns out. Mrs. Barmelin, last week, about fifty-four minutes into the meeting video, Mrs. Vance indicated that she didn't understand the purpose of what it was you'd hand, you brought a handout that surprised everybody. You hadn't the pride of anybody.
Discussion item. That's why I asked to add it to this.
Under surprises, it should have been handed to the administrators and Mrs. Vance. But anyway, um, she said she didn't understand the purpose of what you were proposing and you responded, and I quote, "The purpose is that we have a policy. And our policy of this district is that the school board is to set goals for this district to achieve them." I'd never heard of such a policy in fourteen years of membership on the board. Um, you were asked what policy you were, you were pulling that from, and first you referred to our website and then said 1110. And you'd also referenced past practice during my tenure, which overlaps all a few months of, of your tenure. All goal setting was done pursuant to our administrators' contracts, not policy. Now, back then I was brand new to the board and it never occurred to me to consult policy. And by the time I had the experience, the contracts were so familiar and routine, uh, too ingrained to, to, to trigger it with me. But, um, anyway, I looked into policy 1110 after the meeting and I learned that what you told us at the October meeting was a complete fabrication. It's possible you believed it, I don't know. But nothing, absolutely nothing in policy 1110 deals with setting goals. Since it was so obvious that you hadn't actually reviewed our policy before presenting your recommendation, I, I went ahead and dug into it. Last week I sent to our administrators and Mrs. Vance a lengthy email message that, that presented what, what I found, and I have copies of it for the entire board tonight. But Senator Royer do the open meeting restrictions, but have it here and don't think they're stapled. Oh, yeah, well, this one is. Maybe more than I thought there were. You should, you have extra copies. Those down. And, uh, I think this was the one from which the copies were made. You give one down. I mean, I think, uh, this is mainly for the board. And so, you know, what we have in, in, in 1110, and I alluded to it earlier, I mean, you, you've got a very high-reaching statement of the importance of, of, of goals, which I don't know that anybody here would disagree with. Um, but nothing about setting them. And then the second paragraph, it talks, and, and, and this policy 110 is called the Goals Assessment Policy. And so it talks about how we assess goals. And it talks about it being in conjunction with the board's annual evaluation of superintendent. Um, the board provides time for both the board and the administration to assess the progress of the district during a previous year toward the achievement of current goals. Both the superintendent's evaluation and the progress assessment shall take place prior to the end of each school year. Prior to the end of each school year, so. But as I alluded to earlier or stated earlier, you know, the end of the school year is in June. We've got a specific evaluation of the superintendent policy that says that no later than March 1st, we're going to evaluate performance of the superintendent. So we got conflict, kind of a, I mean, certainly March 1st is before the end of the school year, don't get me wrong, I know that, but. Um, and then regarding treasurer goals, there's nothing about treasurer goal setting anywhere that I could find in policy. In the treasurer's section, it, it's in the evaluation section where it talks about the evalu, the, the, the evaluation of the treasurer should consider among a list of laundry, laundry list items, um, how the treasurer has assisted in accomplishing district goals. Um, this bifurcation of goals happened because of our contracts, not because of anything in policy. Um, so I, 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 I think what the district needs, I, I agree, the new board needs to go in with the superintendent and, and the whole administration. And it should be done the same way that, that board superintendent work is approached generally on all this stuff. There's a reason why we have all these recommendations from our administrators. The board is a high-level entity. It's not supposed to be down in these weeds. It's the superintendent and treasurer that are supposed to get down in the weeds and come to the board with their recommendations. And so the, it, it would be the superintendent, and we used to do this with, 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 uh, um, Dr. Briggs and, and, and Mr. Lewis back when we first started this and maybe did a little bit of it with Mr. Schmidt. Um, our administrators come to us with what their goals should be. That's the way it's supposed to work. It's not supposed to be the board dictating what it is. And this.
And so. Hart, I'm agreeing with you in all that. That's why I brought it up several months ago at our meeting that I wanted this to be a discussion item, and I've asked for that to be a discussion item all along. This is the first time, at least we're getting something back in the fact that I've said, we need to talk about this.
Well.
So.
I think, I, I.
Um, I totally agree. And again, back to allow the next board to move forward.
And my recommendation for the next board would be the thing that we found with, uh, it was when Mr. Wiggins, in one of his last meetings, uh, when we were struggling with evaluations and or, and or, uh, goals. And, and he put a question to us when we were trying to figure something out. He said, well, what does that look like? And we, and, and my response to him was, well, it's our mission statement, which is, you know, help ensuring that each, each student reaches their full potential. He said, well, what does that look like? I have an answer for it. And that was when I realized that it states back to when Dr. Briggs made a determination that we didn't need a vision statement anymore. Because they, the, the vision statement and the mission statement were almost identical. There were, there were there were different words, but they meant the same thing. And what the vision should be is what does accomplishment of that mission or, you can never really accomplish that mission. It's you, you, you're never gonna, you can't evaluate it, but what does that look like to, to the board and the administration? And that's what I would charge, um, the incoming board and, and, uh, uh, Mr. Bloom and our treasurer to, uh, to work on. Because the financial side from the treasurer, and I mean, it's going to be in a total state of flux with everything we're doing down in Columbus. Um, but, uh, that, that's really, I think, where um, we need to go with it. So I, 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 I guess ultimately we are in agreement, but I, I, I don't think it's, I, I, I don't think it's a task that this board can undertake right now. I think that
Right.
the important thing is, right now, we knew that we were going to have new board members. Um, and I think it's already starting, but transition to that new board, I think some of them may have gone to the, to the, uh, dog and pony show down in Columbus this week, the, the school board show. Um, and that's good. It's good for, it's good for new board members to some extent. Um, but the administration needs to work with these new board members to, to help everybody understand what's going on. I mean, we've got almost fifty years worth of experience walking out of this building on, when, when, when that ball hits ground in New York on, on December 31st and starts the next year, almost fifty years. Um, and the board will be left with six years of board experience, the way I count it, two and four. And so, um, that's, uh, it, it, but it can be, you know, we, we didn't have any more experience than that, Mrs. Barmelin, when, 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 when I started on board. Maybe a few wee, a month, you and, you and Colonel Pecorni have been on the board for, um, since, since day and, and July, I think, respectively.
Jeff had been on for four.
Jeff, no, but I'm saying we didn't have more. Jeff had been on for four and Mark Dan had been on for two. And so that was, so we had six plus, they're going to have six exactly, but not enough to matter. Unfortunately, they, we didn't have, I mean, they've, they've got a superintendent that's very capable, uh, very competent. And, um, um, and very experienced. And so I think, I think that's something that the new board can rely on and, uh, and, and, and work with. So I'm sure, I'll shut up. Phone's probably somebody telling me.
I was just going to add to wrap that up, that I actually, I'm looking at it the opposite. It's a good opportunity that you just pointed out a lot of multiple areas where I think we can learn and improve, that we don't take two years to finally act on, you know, coming up with a vision and goals as a district. So I think we can take that and learn from it and hopefully in the next several years, work on doing things better, smoother so that we don't end up disjointed like we are right now.
Well, it always helps to know the past. So we can then learn from it, good things, good things and bad things, and we learn from it and, and, uh, I see nothing but opportunities ahead of all of us, so I'm looking forward to it. And I guess, uh, you, Mr. Bloom, have got a heads up that, uh, that you'll be bringing some stuff forward to the board as far as, um, your vision, your goals and discussion, so.
The district's goals.
Yes, the district's goals, not yours personally. For the district, yes. Thank you for the correction. Yes. You knew what it meant.
We're all one team. We're all one.
We are one team.
Team Northridge.
For the school and for our students, most of all. Okay. Any more discussion? No. Okay. Now we're on to number eighteen, which has reaffirmed the times and dates of the next meetings. The finance committee is Wednesday, December 10th at 6:00 PM, um, the district office and/or Zoom. And our next board meeting is Tuesday, December the 16th at 6:30 PM here at the district office, and it'll also be on YouTube. Do we have any announcements? Anything coming up, Kate, of kids?
Oh, lots of things, but I don't want to, I don't want to throw out wrong dates or times or anything, so.
Is there anything that jumps out at you?
What was already meant, what we're starting up.
Oh, yeah. The winter went.
A lot of stuff.
Okay.
I'd like to have to say something. It's, uh, no place really for me to do it, but, uh, on an announcement, uh, just wanted to say, you know, my time as treasurer is coming to an end here at Northridge, and I want to say I couldn't be happier with the leadership of, uh, my first opportunity to ever work with a experienced superintendent. It has been amazing. I'm actually kind of sad that I'm not going to get to continue to work with, uh, Mr. Bloom because it has been one of the best experiences of my life, working with somebody that, uh, is experienced, knows what they're doing. Has, uh, works well with people, uh, keeps people included, communication's great. Uh, that and Jamie Scott, and I'd like to throw a little shout out for Jamie. She just, uh, got her PhD. I think it was a PhD.
On Monday.
On Monday. She, uh, defended her, um, her dissertation and her, um, uh, work. And, uh, anyway, bringing her on board uh, has been, just been outstanding also. And, um, and Matt's up for the challenge. Uh, this is just going to be a, a great year for everyone. And, um, it's been a great year and it's going to continue to be a great year. And I'd also like to say that, um, I appreciate the opportunity to be at Northridge. It's been the greatest experience of my life. Um, it's been an opportunity to, uh, grow my, my family here. And, um, I'm still going to be here. I believe, Kate, I'm going to be here with one of your kids' graduations because I've got a sixth grader.
Yes, my.
So.
Yes, my youngest.
Yeah, so we're going to be with you at graduation. We're, uh, we're going to be, uh, with the, uh, fourth grade class, the third grade class and a, and an incoming kindergartner next year. So, uh, we're going to be around a bit. We live here and we're going to be here and Carly's still here. And so I'm excited, very excited about what the future is for Northridge. And I'm so very appreciative of the opportunity for the Jeff, uh, Doug and Jema and Colonel Pecorni and Mark Dan gave me to come here, changed my life, and I couldn't be more appreciative. So thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you all.
Very welcome, Brett.
You are very welcome. Not that I got you started here. All right, um, any more announcements? No?
I just want to pile on with, uh, congrats to Dr. Scott.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah.
That is a big accomplishment.
It is.
She's pretty happy.
That's awesome.
I can imagine.
Okay. Now we're on to, uh, Jeff, your favorite thing adjournment.
Make a motion, we adjourn.
Okay, motion by Mr. Schrock.
I'll second that.
And seconded by Mr. Hart to adjourn. Can I have a voice vote? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. The ayes have it. The motion passes without dissent. And it is now 7:21, we are adjourned.